I'd like to now call the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Mr. Smith, we'll let you know how you can attend remotely.
Thank you, Madam Chair. During the public comment period, if you wish to speak from home, you can use Zoom to raise your hand, or if you call in, simply press star nine on your phone, and we'll be glad to pick you up. Thank you.
A few introductions. To my far left is Mr. David Williams from District One. Next to him is Mr. Tom Berry from District Two. Next to him is Mr. Smith, myself Karen Carmack from District Five. To my immediate right is Mr. Mike Byerly from District Three. To his right is Mr. Bill Cox from District Four. And at the end is Mr. Tom Latchney, our county attorney. If you could please stand, Mr. Byerly will lead us in the pledge, and Mr. Williams will do the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your Honor, thank you for another beautiful day in Powhatan County and all the many blessings we enjoy. Amen.
Okay. Any requests to postpone or amend the agenda? Seeing none, I move we approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Roger.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to the county administrator updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First tonight, I thought it would be helpful to start a new process here. The board means on a monthly basis to go through and introduce to the board and to the citizens, new staff that's been engaged over the last month. And we thought we'd start tonight with a crew of great new employees that we're excited to have onboard. First, I'd like to introduce Jim Garcia, who started today. Jim, please stand up. Jim is brand new, like, one day into the job. We were so excited to have him. He came out of, he started today, moved here from Florida, where he worked as GIS specialist at the Department of Transportation. And he previously worked in the city of Baltimore as a GIS specialist. So, we're very glad to have you here. We need you, and we're looking forward to working with you. Thank you, Jim. Next employee, new employee, Mr. Thomas Voe. Tommy, he joined us actually two months ago. He's as a budget manager, and he previously worked in Wrightville County as a budget analyst. And we're glad to have Tommy helping Charlotte and her team here in Finance Department. Thanks, Tommy. And our Community Development Department, to make sure I pronounce this right, Thomas N. Corvia. Thomas joined the planning department as a planner one. He started on February 8th. Again, Thomas, we're glad you're here. Previously worked as assistant planner in a township of Middleton, New Jersey. So, we're glad to teach you the southern way, and we're so glad that you're here. Thanks, Thomas. And that's, we have a couple of employees that couldn't be here tonight, but other than that, that's our first staff. We'd like to make this our tradition, and we'll try to get the word out as we get new staff on place, so people know who they are and what they do. So, thank you for your time tonight on that area.
Yes, welcome.
Very good.
Proclamation.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have two proclamations for you, the board, tonight. The first is on page five of your packet. It's proclamation P. 2021-02, and officially recognizes April 11th through the 17th as National Telecommunications Week, and provides recognition of the compassion, understanding, and professionalism displayed as a first public contact of our first responder team at Powhatan. We want to thank the professionals in this group, and the resolution here tonight will be signed and delivered to Tom Noah and Cindy and their team. Thank you, team, for being here tonight, and we appreciate all the great work you do on the front end of our community, emergency communication. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Our second proclamation, Madam Chair, is on page seven of your packet, proclamation P. 2021-03, and officially recognized the month of May as Building Safety Month. Our building inspection professionals do a tremendous job informing the public and enforcing the building code, all designed to protect the public from fire, hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, earthquakes, floods, while assisting property owners with safe, sustainable, energy-efficient homes. Thanks to our fine staff in the building inspections office for all they do for our residents, and the resolution will be signed tonight and delivered to our team in the building inspection office tomorrow. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. All right. Moving on, I believe we have a presentation from Southside Electric. Welcome.
Good evening. Thanks for letting us be here today. I'd like to thank the board for letting us speak today. My name is Lloyd Lenhart. I'm the Director of Community Relations with Southside Electric Cooperative. Also with me today, I've got Mr. George Phelps. He's the Vice President of Engineering. I've got Mr. Brad Fur, Vice President of Operations. Mr. Frank Rennie, he's our legal counsel, but he's here as a resident of Powhatan. As well as Mr. Joshua Wells, he's our Director of Technical Services and also a resident of Powhatan. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Brad Fur, and he'll give the presentation.
Thank you, Lloyd. Southside Electric's largest lender is the Rural Utility Service, a leg of the United States Department of Agriculture. Because of that, we build to our U.S. standards, our distribution system. Let's see. There it goes. So, if you, I'll direct your attention to the right side here. There's a map in the United States, the continental United States. There's three ice loading zones, light, medium, and heavy. Southside Electric service territory is bifurcated by medium and heavy ice loading standards. I can tell you that Southside Electric builds to the heavy ice loading standards in its entire service territory, and has done so since 1937. So, what does that mean? Heavy ice load, and we build for a half inch of radial ice, forgive me, a half inch of radial ice at zero degrees Fahrenheit and a 40 mile per hour wind. The reason the zero degrees Fahrenheit is important is because conductor contracts in those conditions, and so that's the standard we build to. To bring it in perspective, if you take a 300-foot span, which is our average span of conductor, with a relatively medium-sized number-two conductor, it's 32 pounds, is how much it weighs. Add one-half inch of ice, and that's another 153 pounds for that span. Add just one-quarter more inch of ice to make it three-quarters, you're up to 300 pounds in addition to the 32 pounds. So, the thing to point out here is that the growth of weight is exponential to the growth in diameter of the ice. It's also important to notice there's no, note that there's no standard for the shock load that's delivered from a tree when it falls on a line or a power pole. We don't design for that. So, our emergency restoration plan, it's a plan that's been in place for many, many years. As we go and see forecasts for a weather event, we get together and we talk, I think back on, as early as February the 5th, we were talking about this potential storm for the 11th. The forecast were all over the place. We were seeing anywhere from quarter to a half inch of ice. As you can see here, this is one of the forecasts we were looking for. Down the road, we saw some that were up to an inch and a half, and the problem was is that none of the forecasts were lining up early on. During the week of the ice storm, we got together and we activated our emergency response plan, and all that does is a set of checklists that we go through, tried and true over the years. Through many storms, we've evolved the thing, and each functional area of the business has something to do during that time. So, making sure that the generators are running, making sure that we have the fuel backups, we have poles and wire and sleeves on hand for the storm restoration. During the storm, I'm proud to say we didn't have any SEC employee injuries. Of the people that we brought in to help, we had three minor injuries. Bruce Face, a gentleman fell and cut his leg, got some stitches, and then a hyperextended knee, all of which were relatively minor, and then no new COVID cases for anyone at the, at Southside Electric. So, once the storm was over, the work really began. It was a tough two weeks getting the power back on, but when that was done, we still had about 70 broken poles that we knew of. We got those poles replaced that week. And then there were also some services where the meter base was pulled off the house. And so, at that point, it was an effort between Southside Electric and the counties. The counties actually have a part in that inspection process that's required before we reconnect those services. Phase two of the recovery effort, on March 22nd, we brought in Osmos Utility. It's a third party. They're out doing inspections on our most heavily involved circuits. The thing to point out here is our estimated cost for that is about $820,000, subject to be a little bit higher, depending on exactly how much work they do for us. And then on this slide, I'll just point out that Southside Electric has committed another $1.9 million to its right-of-way program, which is already $5.3 million budgeted for this year. And so, we're making efforts to continue to go out there and do cleanup. A couple of things we're doing, aerial trimming. We had planned for two weeks. We're planning on doing eight weeks of that now. Have to hire a couple more ground crews, because the aerial trimming leaves a mess on the ground, so they have to come behind and clean up. So, quite an effort, if you will, on following up after the restoration. I did skip one item. All of the cleanup removal of the poles and the transformers, that was done and was completed on April, April the 1st. So, we've gotten that behind us. So, let's look back in history. If we go back to 2003, if you remember, that was the year of Hurricane Isabel. SADI, the System Average Interruption Duration Index, is a measure of how many minutes you would expect to be out if you had an outage on Southside Electric's system. So, as the number goes down, that's better for the member. We were at about 600 minutes back in 2003, and you can see that's trended down to about half of that in 2020. Brings us to the Customer Average Interruption Duration Index. That is, if you had an outage on Southside Electric, about how long would it have taken us to restore it? Again, as the number comes down, that's better for the member. Just over 200 minutes back in 2003, we're down around half of that now, so you can see that downward trend. So, there's been a lot of effort and money spent towards reliability with Southside Electric over the past decade and a half. So, the State Corporation Commission issued a 42-question data request that was actually issued. It happens after several, if you have certain large storms, they'll ask us for that. You can see a couple of the examples where Southside Electric has done that in the past. It's also important to note that Dominion Energy and Mecklenburg Electric got the exact same request, and our responses were submitted by April the 2nd. Now, subsequently, we've gotten some more questions back from the SEC, and we're fulfilling that request right now. So, vegetation management, one of our largest expenses. From time to time, we bring in a third party that can do an assessment of our system, a management view, if you will, to assess kind of what we have out there to deal with. And the first highlighted bullet is, we deal with about 2.2 million trees we have to touch in some way when we have a right-of-way cycle. On our system, you know, we're built through the woods in many cases. 87% of our system is estimated to have trees on both sides. And so, when it comes to weather events, we're heavily impacted by, you know, ice, wind, rain, things like that. The bottom bullets just point out that when we've had these types of assessments, we do take those recommendations and put them into effect. So, we've got a hazard tree removal plan that started back in 2010. We have a herbicide application program now that kind of helps manage the woody tree growth from the floor of the right-of-way. And then we have a different standard we use now for trimming rights-of-way and yard I won't go through this slide. This just shows some of the various things that we do to maintain our rights-of-way. Towards the end, you'll see some of the pictures, and you'll see how the conditions of our rights-of-way, and how most of these trees that cause the problems are from outside of that, and you'll hear me say that several times. So, this is spending on a vegetation management program. 2008, you can see where it was, and what I'll point out here is that we spend as much as we can from year to year, based on, you know, dollars that we collect from our members. When we get towards the start of a rate cycle, we typically have, you know, additional money that we can spend, so you'll see the spending ebb and flow as time goes on. Here, vegetation management, hazard tree removal, that's where we're going out and looking for trees that we call, they may be dying, they may be dead, they may be leaning. There's a lot of different reasons it can be considered a hazard tree, but these are outside the right-of-way, and we're allowed to cut them. From year to year, we're able to do various, various numbers, if you will, in the end of the thousands every year that we cut. In 2018, we had an anomaly. We had, we had a little less spending. We had some major event days, multiple large storms that kind of impacted our ability to do normal hazard tree removal. So, this is, from this storm, we had about 2,136 actual outage locations. Of that 1,544 are tree-related, and I'll take you right to the last bullet. 1,448 of those were deemed to be outside of the maintained right-of-way. So, pole inspections, we have a very robust pole inspection program at Southside Electric, approximately a 10-year cycle. We go out and we visually, this is a third party that does this for us. They visually inspect the pole, they dig down below grade, they'll bore the pole, they sound it, and so they have a multitude of things they're looking for, but what we don't do is replace poles just because they're old. We replace them when they mechanically can't do their job anymore. If we have what we call emergency poles, poles that are eminently going to fail, we go out and replace those very quickly. Otherwise, if it's, if the pole's deemed to be entering its end of life, we try to replace those within 12 to 24 months, and we consistently are able to do that. So, I've got some cost estimates I'm going to show on the next slide. Before I do, I want to point out that Southside Electric's total utility plant's $386 million. Of that 211 million is dead. So, some people claim that, you know, maybe we should replace the copper on our system, because the copper is not as strong as aluminum. I'll point to the bottom line. If we do that, we estimate that to be a $240 million endeavor. The next one is, what if we put it all underground? People believe that that would, you know, prevent outages. If we did, it's almost a $1.1 billion endeavor, and our members simply can't afford that. What if we estimate, or what if we moved our right-of-way from 30 and 40 feet to 100 feet? Still wouldn't prevent all the outages, but it would cost another billion dollars or so. And then the last one, a lot of folks think because the poles are old, that's why they broke. If we went out and took all of our poles older than 30 years and replaced them, it's about $165 million just to bring the, bring our system to that standard, and then it would be another 8 million or so each year, just to keep the poles that were older than 30 years off the system. Public relations, we used broadcast media as we could to get the message out. We use social media and multiple forms. I can tell you that we began holding teams' meetings with county administrators, state legislators, staff of SEC. We did that, I think it was the part of the second week, on the 18th, we began doing that, but it was really well received, and we were able to get some positive feedback that helped us understand how to exchange information. And this is, this will be something we do in the future on major storms. So, you may have heard that some of our members had trouble getting through on the telephone lines, and there was some truth to that. On any given day at Southside Electric, if we, if a call comes in and we're unable to answer it because of call volume, it rolls over to the Cooperative Response Center. The Cooperative Response Center has locations in Minnesota, in Texas, and in Tennessee. Well, the storm came through Dallas or Texas and had, there were some problems at that facility. They had power outages, broken pipes. They were unable to use that facility at all. The Tennessee facility was on backup generation, was able to take some calls, and, but the lion's share of the calls were routed to Minnesota. Well, this, because we weren't the only cooperative in business that uses CRC that was having storm-related issues, I think the call center was overwhelmed, and sometimes the members did get busy signals. So, we'll, you know, CRC will decide whether they think they need a fourth call center or not. I don't know that they'll spend that money, because this was a storm that was just an anomaly, if you will. It was pretty unusual. I will say that out of all the things I pointed out, we had great community support. There's a picture in the middle here shows a bulldozer pulling a truck out. There were thank you cards sent in from schools. There was donations made from churches, you know, in the form of food and drinks and things like that, especially out in the field to the line personnel. There were little stations set up that had coffee and snacks, just a, an outpouring of positive response from the community in many ways. I'll just point out on this slide, we got help from as far south as Georgia, as far northwest as Indiana. You'll see in the next slides that we had a large contingent of folks trying to get the power back on. Some people ask, you know, why didn't Mecklenburg and Dominion get the power on more quickly? And if you look at the, it's a little bit hard to see, but the dark area there is the areas of the highest ice accumulation. If you look closely, there's a yellow outline in there. That's our service territory, so it falls pretty much wholly within that heavy ice accumulation There was some information out that said SEC had cut their budget by 40% from 2018 to 2019. If you look at our 4990, it shows some information. We spent $14 million in 2018, and 2019, $9 million. Let me tell you that the whole story is, is that in 2018, we had a $10 million budget. 19 was a $11 million budget, but we had Tropical Storm Michael at the end of 18. Well, that drove our spending up to do that storm repair, and then we were, we qualified for FEMA reimbursement in 19, so we made that accounting entry, if you will, that offset some of the spending that shows up here. And so, if you take out Tropical Storm Michael, our budget increased by a million from 18 to 19. So, this is just some system metrics, kind of shows you how large our service territory is. We serve 57,000 meters, 128,000 poles to do that, 9,400 miles of line. And then this is outage metrics from the storm. Our first outage came in on the evening of the 12th. We ended up on the 26th, about 9:00 AM is the last outage that we, we qualified when we were doing our storm metric calculation. Number of outages is 2,136. As of today, 866 confirmed broken poles. That's, that's more poles than we replace in a normal year, through our normal maintenance This just shows on the, on the days we had, we had stage with about 111 additional outside employees on day one, on the 11th. That storm didn't materialize. We kept them on Friday the 12th, and on the 13th, when the first major storm hit, we had additional employees to respond. Well, at that point, those around us weren't willing to release, because they were doing power restoration as well. Well, then, after a day or two, we had the forecast for the 18th, which was another ice storm, and it was forecast to be worse than, than the first one. And so, as you can see, no one would release until after that storm did not materialize. On the 19th, we were able to get a deluge of help, and we had 942 additional outside personnel, I'm sorry, total outside personnel at one point, just over 1,000 total in the outage restoration effort. Our second greatest effort that I know of in our history was during Isabel, and we had about 400 employees outdoors. This just shows our fleet on the left, about 103 strong with one track vehicle. We ended up with 577 outside vehicles and equipment. 21 of those were track machines, so it was very wet conditions. You'll see that in some of the pictures we show here at the end. There were some rumors that we ran out of material. I can tell you that Southside Electric has a very strong supply chain. If you look here on the right side, the graph shows the poles we had on hand, 287, and then the bars are just poles that we replaced during various storms, Tropical Storm Michael being the most robust, if you will, at about 160 poles. Well, first thing some people say is, oh, you had 287 poles, but you had 866 broken. Well, I'll tell you that we were getting, on some days, we were getting multiple loads of poles, even on weekends, Saturdays and Sundays. So, again, our supply chain management is strong. We never ran out of any materials. On this slide, I'll direct you to three of the rows, the broken pole number, the field personnel number, and the total cost. The total cost is off the chart, you know, compared to our other storms, and that's because of the number of broken poles. The broken poles slow down the restoration effort, which drive cost. This slide just points out that when you have a large contingent of folks that you have to take care of, you need a place for them to sleep, you need to feed them, you have to launder their clothes at some point. So, these are things we're dealing with in the background, you know, during the restoration effort. And then finally, just a couple of minutes here, and we'll be done, just some photos. I'll point out, as we go through here, some of the rights-of-way. Many of these show the large ice accumulation. This is about three-quarters of an inch of ice in the Danieltown area, much farther south than here. This was a shot taken by one of our drones, same here. So, as you look on the right side, you can begin to see the right-of-way and the walls, how clear they are. Here's a good picture. It shows each one of these, if you look down at the base, they're coming from outside of our maintained right-of-way. And these are otherwise healthy trees. They wouldn't have been identified as hazard trees. Hate to be the one who had to cut those trees out of the middle. That's a, that's a hairy situation. Again, if you look at these, you see pretty clear walls on the rights-of-way. But it rained during a lot of the restoration. We had very wet conditions to deal with, wet and cold, I'll point out. You see broken poles, you know, with 866 broken poles, you didn't have to look far to see one. The picture on the top right points out, I'm fairly sure that truck's sitting there, you know, cutting a tree out of the road, so that they can make it to the outage location. Again, had community support. Here shows some, us being helped in and out of some areas. Again, wet conditions. This was an area in our eastern district that we had to deal with to get power back on to a few of the key loads there. And this is the last slide. This shows our central district, one of the mornings when we were mobilizing. It was a monumental effort, and appreciate your time. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Do y'all have any questions?
I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
Heard it. Anytime you have something, an event like this storm we had, there's always lessons learned.
Sure.
What did you learn?
I'll say that I personally have been through a number of storms. This is my 32nd year in the industry. I think one of the things we learned is that we're in a time that's much different than what I've seen, you know, even in the past five or 10 years, in that the membership wants information now, and you can get a small faction of the membership that has a very loud microphone. I think we learned better ways to manage that and to deal with it, better ways to communicate, if you will.
Can you consult with us? How we could do the same thing?
Sure. I think we could give you our advice, but I'm not sure how, how good we are yet, but we definitely have learned some things that we're working on.
Going, going forward, what do you plan on doing differently?
So, I think we will definitely have a great communication plan from the start. We're going to understand how to get the message out. We still, there's still things that will be difficult. If we have a storm like this in the future, we're still going to have an extended outage. That, that needs to be clear. But we'll, we'll have better ways of communicating that to our membership and giving them an expectation.
Well, it's clear from your presentation, you want the community to understand exactly what you did and what you didn't do.
Sure.
And you want to make sure that communication channel is open.
Yes, sir.
And you want to be able to inform the public. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we will have our first public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Anybody on Zoom? Zoom is clear? Okay. I think we have one. Thank you all.
Good evening. Name's Stevie Barrow. Live at 3492 Richards Run, Powhatan, District Three. Mr. Boll is my supervisor, which I'm very happy with so far. Oh, I want to read a few things that have been brought to my attention about the proposed comprehensive plan. I understand y'all will be discussing possibly tonight. Oh, four of the seven zoning designations allow for high-density housing, apartments, townhouses, condominiums, tropoxes. Allows over 5,000 high-density housing units spewed along Rev. 60. Neighborhood residential allows for four high-density housing units per acre on 30% of the plots. Economic opportunity zoning allows for nine high-density housing units per acre on 30% of the plots. I think that is the Flat Rock area and county line. You know, I'm going to ask a question. I know y'all can't answer. Does February 26, 2018 ring a bell to anybody in this room? I would think it would. That was probably the most, in my opinion, most important day in this county, as far as people standing up and speaking to mine. And the common, the main consent, what I gathered from that meeting, was people don't want high-density housing in this county. Some people say it was caused, it was, you know, government subsidized housing. That wasn't the issue. The issue was, people move to Powhatan and live in Powhatan for a rural environment. They pay the taxes. Sounds like taxes will be coming down, which is great. But we don't need all this high-density housing up here. We don't. If you want high-density housing, all you can do is go a few miles down the road, West Chester, you're going to have all you want. For long, you won't be able to drive through if all the apartments coming up. So, I asked this board to please look hard at what's coming at y'all on this comprehensive plan. I don't know where it's coming from. It's like every few years, it creeps back up. I have a pretty good idea where it's coming from. Developers want it. Well, developers don't run this county, as far as I know. I pray to God they don't. It was a time they pretty much did, and I hope we're not headed back to that. And I hope we're not headed back to that. So please, look at this plan, review it, and get us something better. We don't need all this high density housing. I'm sorry. We just don't. You know, everybody said, well, you know, I want my kids to live here. Well, you know, I couldn't live where my parents lived for twenty five years. I couldn't afford it, and I finally could. So everybody needs to crawl, then walk, then run. So please, look at this very closely. There's a whole lot of people watching what y'all gonna do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, I will close the first public comment period. Moving on, the consent agenda. If no objections, I move we present. Okay. Questions or comments on the motion?
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do you want a brief update, Ned, on the upcoming appointments?
Yes, thank you, ma'am chair. Board of Zoning Appeals, May thirty first. To Harris, we're not, we're not sure about his willingness to continue on that. We need to talk with him about that. On the Extension Leadership Council, Mr. Bailey will like to continue when we get to that point. Bailey's in that role now and would like to continue. Economic Development Authority, Mr. Schaefer and this Weber would like to continue if you if the board moves on that direction. Community Policy and Management Team, it's Stevie Wright, no word. We need to get in touch with Ms. Wright to see if her desire to move forward. Hers is a June thirtieth appointment. And the Social Services Board, District Two, we do need to make an appointment by July one. Looks like our previous appointee is is left, is moved away.
We had made an appointment for that one, so that one we can take off.
Fantastic.
Okay, moving on, we will go to our first public hearing.
The first public hearing tonight related to land use is ordinance number O twenty twenty one oh seven, which is case number twenty one dash oh two dash R E Z C. This is a request by Michael Woody to rezone tax map parcel forty three dash twenty five A from General Commercial C to Commerce Center C C. The property includes about one point three acres located in the eastern part of the county along U S Route sixty Anderson Highway at its intersection with Dowthick Court. The address is seventeen oh one Dowthick Court. This request is being made to allow a contractor's office on the subject property within the C zoning district. Contractor's office requires a C U P. Within the Commerce Center zoning district, a contractor's office is permitted by right. The twenty nineteen Long Range Conference of Plan designates the subject property as Commerce Center. It's located within one of the three growth areas in Powhatan County, the Route sixty corridor east special area plan. The Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding this request at its meeting on April sixth. No members of the public spoke during the public hearing, and after discussion, the Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of five to zero. The Department of Community Development also recommends approval of this request. The applicant representative is here tonight, but they don't have a presentation planned, but they are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, that sounds great. If the applicant doesn't care to make a statement, we'll go ahead and have the public hearing on this case. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Chase, do we have anyone on Zoom? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing.
Anyone on Zoom?
No, he said no.
Okay.
Yeah, I asked him. Um, would any questions for the applicant or staff? None? Mr. Williams, this is in your district. Would you care to make a motion?
Yeah, I was, yes. Ma'am Chair, I recommend approval of ordinance O dash twenty twenty one dash oh seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Had to roll call.
Oh, roll call, sorry. We were ready to roll. All right.
No objection there. Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Barry?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Mr. Barley?
Aye.
Ms. Carmack?
Aye. All right, moving on.
The second public hearing for the night also relates to land use. It's ordinance number O dash twenty twenty one dash oh eight, which is case number twenty one dash oh three dash R E Z. Other side LLC requests the rezoning of tax map parcel number fifty three dash one ten from Commerce Center C C to Rural Residential five R R five. The property has about seven and a half acres and is located on the south side of State Route six oh four, which is Genito Road, approximately five hundred feet east of its intersection with State Route six twenty two, which is Dorset Road. It's located near the Dorset crossroads and the Genito West subdivision, and the southeastern part of the county surrounds this particular property. This request is being made to allow residential uses on the property. There's a historic structure on site that used to be used for residential purposes, and the applicant would like to allow potential buyers to use that for residential purposes as well. The twenty nineteen Long Range Conference of Plan designates the subject property as Rural Residential on the countywide future land use map. It's also located near the designated crossroads at Dorset. On April sixth, two thousand and twenty one, the Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding this request. After discussion, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval with a vote of five to zero. The Department of Community Development also recommends approval of this request. The applicant representative is here tonight, but they don't have a presentation planned, but they'd be happy to answer any questions you only have.
Okay, if the applicant does not care to make a statement, we will have the public hearing on this case. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Anybody on Zoom? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions of the applicant or staff? Seeing none, Mr. Barry, this is in your district.
Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend approval of ordinance O dash twenty twenty one dash zero eight.
Any questions or comments on the motion? We'll do a roll.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Barry?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Barley?
Aye.
Ms. Carmack?
Aye. Perfect. Moving on to our workshop discussion, the Planning Commission, if you guys want to come down here, don't be shy. You're all in the back there.
Well, I'm going to kick it off. How about that?
This is Ms. Hurt, chairman of the Planning Commission.
And we're all present here tonight. If you aren't familiar with your planning commissioner, we'll introduce ourselves at the end.
It's too late.
It's too late?
If you're not familiar with your planning commissioner, at this point, it's too late.
That that's true. We've been rolling around for a while. Let me say, the planning commission, we were very intentional in our approach because we know that this is a very important document. But I do want to remind everyone that it's a visionary document that kind of shows the community what properties would look like over a long range time period. It's difficult to predict the future, and we knew that, and we put a lot of effort into understanding what we could come up with, what the future may look like. As you know, the planning commission, we just make a recommendation to the board of supervisors, and you guys are certainly, you know, we're open and ready to do further research that you may request. Key points on a successful comp plan, it should be a shared vision throughout the entire county. We have thirty thousand residents. We tried to consider all relevant facts. We tried to be realistic. We tried to make a plan that was actionable, and we tried to prioritize what thirty thousand people had through the years stated what they would like in Powhatan County. So what information, what approach did we use? What did we utilize? Well, we used your strategic plan that you recently developed. And in that plan, it stated that we are a place where business can prosper, and the stars are visible at night, to quote from your plan. There was a survey in two thousand and eighteen, a citizen survey, and Andrew will share information from that. So we went back and looked at that. Being the science person I am, I like to find data wherever I can in making a recommendation or coming up from plan. We certainly listened and read com- public comments. And as a team, you have five people, and as you are well aware, you're not going to always agree a hundred percent on everything. So we tried to be very collaborative. We tried to be very much of a team. We use consensus building process. We tried to be very cohesive. We tried to listen to everyone's opinions, go in with an open mind, and obviously, everyone didn't agree on every single aspect of the plan, but we all felt very comfortable with the final product that we are showing you tonight. Obviously, this is a tentative presentation to to you, and certainly, it's your responsibility to make adjustments and comments. We are very systematic in looking at changes to land use. And as you know, once the land use is nailed down and passed by the board of supervisors, we will certainly evaluate and address subdivision ordinances and look at what works and doesn't work for particular land uses. It's kind of premature, we felt, to jump in now to try to develop ordinances for land uses that had not been agreed upon yet. In closing, before I'll turn it over to Andrew, our overall goals were, we wanted residents to be able to work, live, play, shop, and learn without leaving the county. That would be really ideal. We wanted a good balance between growth and preservation of the wonderful natural resources of our beautiful county. We wanted to keep the dominant rural character, but realized it had to be supplemented by some sort of mixed residential and business uses for economic and revenue reasons. So I opened it up to that, and I'm going to turn it over to Andrew. He has a presentation in your packet. You have the comp plan that the Planning Commission, we've gone through, some correcting the smallest little details. I'm very proud of them, and an executive summary in there as well as to why we came up with what we did. So I'll turn it over to Andrew, who's the expert.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurt.
Thank you.
All right, so just give a little bit of background for the the audience. In August of two thousand and twenty, the board indicated that it would like to update the comprehensive plan. The current plan that was adopted was adopted in June of two thousand and nineteen, and the board, again, in August, decided to request the Planning Commission start looking at the document and making some updates. There were two joint workshops in September and October of two thousand and twenty where the board and planning commission met together to talk about the update process. Beginning in November of two thousand and twenty, the Planning Commission looked at the comprehensive plan itself, focusing on chapter eight, land use and community character, as well as chapter nine, which is transportation. On April sixth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding the draft plan that was prepared. And after holding that public hearing and making a few adjustments to the plan, the Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of five to zero. So this meeting tonight launches your review as the board of supervisors of this document. The Planning Commission, as Ms. Hurt stated, prepares a recommended plan for you all to review, but ultimately, it's your document to adopt as an official policy guide for the county. Ms. Hurt touched on a lot of these things, but these were the main approaches that the Planning Commission used throughout the review and update process. Again, based on direction you all provided at those joint workshops, the Planning Commission focused on land use and transportation, chapters eight and nine of the plan. They also made some minor edits to other chapters, but again, this was the primary focus. While updating the plan, members of the Planning Commission worked collaboratively to build consensus on different issues. Not everyone agreed on every single issue or every single recommendation within the document. But as Ms. Hurt stated earlier, they really tried to work together to come to a compromise that they thought was best, a best practice regarding land use in Powhatan County. The Planning Commission used different documents to update the plan and different references, including the strategic plan, different surveys, as as Ms. Hurt mentioned, trends that were seen in the data, as well as input provided at previous zoning cases. So these are the seven kind of guiding strategies that the Planning Commission used throughout the process. Number one, simplify the county, countywide future land use plan. They looked at the terminology used to make it a little bit more transparent and easy to understand for the public and looked at the different land use designations to see which ones could be eliminated, combined, changed, and that kind of thing. They aim to accommodate commercial and industrial uses along Route sixty, particularly within the Route sixty corridor east special area plan. That's the part of the county that's located along Route sixty from Flat Rock to the Chesterfield County line. So again, commercial and industrial development focusing on that part of the county. They wanted to discourage strip style commercial development, looking at the different recommended design characteristics of the gateway business land use designation in particular, to try to preserve the rural character of the Route sixty corridor while accommodating commercial and economic development. They encouraged new development to incorporate design elements that reflect the area's rural character, again, by providing some guidance within the different descriptions of the land use designations. They considered the land use plans and policies adopted adopted by neighboring localities, looking at best practices and policies that localities throughout Virginia use to help manage growth. They also looked at what some of our neighboring localities have designated their properties that are joined Powhatan in the comprehensive plan. They organized recommended transportation projects in a way that provides realistic expectations to the public. There's over a billion dollars worth of recommended transportation improvements within the twenty nineteen comprehensive plan, as well as the draft plan. The Planning Commission felt it was important to really organize those projects in in terms of which ones will be realistically implemented in the near term, which is versus which projects are more visionary and long term initiatives that might take thirty, forty years to actually realize. So those are some of the guiding strategies, and more information about those strategies was also included within the agenda packet. So again, chapter eight, land use and community character, was one of the chapters they really focused on. Here's a summary of some of the more significant changes that were made. Again, the Planning Commission revised and renamed the land use designations. For example, rural preservation and rural residential were combined into one rural areas designation that takes up about eighty percent of the county. Two new mixed use designations were applied to the Courthouse Village. The rural enterprise zone, which was located between the Courthouse Village and the Route sixty east special area plan, was eliminated. And the descriptions for all of the different land use designations were updated to really get to the idea that we care about the form of development and the character. So for example, within the neighborhood residential designation, the Planning Commission really wanted some information added about agri-hoods, which are a development type where agricultural uses and farms are really integrated into the project and its open space to to help maintain that rural character of these developments. The countywide future land use plan was adjusted, particularly within the Route sixty east corridor growth area, as well as the Courthouse Village. Commercial nodes were added along Route sixty within the Route sixty corridor east. And these are areas where more high visibility businesses, businesses that need to be seen from the road should locate. And then the recommended community character, development characteristics, encourage development outside of those nodes to have significant buffers to be screened so that vegetation softens the appearance of that development. And then finally, the descriptions for each of those special area plans or the three growth areas we have were updated and reformatted to give a little bit more information about the desired character of the development, what the goals for each particular growth area are, as well as some pictures that kind of demonstrate the type of development we want to see. So again, the overall concept of the plan remains the same from two thousand and ten and two thousand and nineteen, direct development to our three growth areas. The growth areas themselves make up less than five percent of the county. Eighty percent is rural areas, and then the remainder, the difference between ninety five and eighty, is our natural conservation area. So rural preservation plus natural conservation make up more than ninety five percent of the county. And again, those three growth areas make up five percent of the county's total land area. So again, this is the Route sixty quarter east, and I'll just give some high level concepts on on this map. Gateway Business, which accommodates commercial and some light industrial developments located along Route sixty with limited residential development, which is designated as neighborhood residential off of Route sixty. Some of these neighborhood residential areas include existing neighborhoods such as Holly Hills, Huntington, and Swiftwood. The Courthouse Village is another one of our growth areas that, of course, surrounds the Courthouse Village. There's mixed use land use designation around the historic core of the village, which already has a mixed use character, as well as some additional corridor mixed use designation along Route thirteen, as well as Scottville Road. There is the Gateway Business designation located along Route sixty near the intersection of Route five twenty two and Academy Road to encourage more highway oriented commercial development in those areas. One of the biggest differences between the twenty nineteen plan and this draft is that there's a gap or a separation between the the core Courthouse Village and the more highway oriented commercial development at Plainview. Previously, the or in the twenty nineteen plan, the growth area stretches from about the P L C all the way to Plainview. In this rendition of the plan, there's a a small gap where those two portions of the Courthouse Village are separated. And then, and the Route seven eleven Village, which stretches along seven eleven east of Route two eighty eight, there weren't really any changes at all to that particular plan. Economic opportunity is located near the interchange itself of Route. itself of Route 288 and Route 711. And then we have Neighborhood Residential, which is primarily the existing Founder's Bridge, Bell Bridge, Bell Crest neighborhoods. So in total, there are 10 different land use designations in the recommended plan. And the first seven of those designations listed on the that table are applied to the growth areas. The corridor mixed use village, neighborhood residential, economic opportunity, gateway business, industrial. Again, those are applied to the growth areas and not all of those land use designations are in all the growth areas. So for example, industrial is only in Route 60 corridor east and includes South Creek and Oak Ridge. The corridor mixed use in the village land use designations are only applied to the Courthouse Village. And then Economic Opportunity is in two of the three growth areas, Route 60 corridor east and Route 711 Village. So again, these designations were tailored in some respects to each of the growth areas. Again, 4.35% of the total county land area is within designated growth areas. The remainder is either rural areas or natural conservation. So that sums up chapter eight, land use and community character. And again, that chapter is what we use a lot of times when evaluating rezoning requests, conditional use permits, different land use cases that are discretionary that the Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission must review. The other chapter that the planning commission spent a lot of time on was chapter nine, which is transportation. Really, the main change they made in this chapter was reorganizing the projects. Before, in the 2010 and the 2019 plan, it was just a long list of recommended road improvements. In this plan, the road projects are grouped or the transportation improvements are grouped into several types, intersection improvements, more thoroughfare improvements. And one new section we have is pedestrian bicycle improvements. So some projects are identified, sidewalks and that kind of thing within our three growth areas. That's a new addition from the 2019 plan. Not only are those projects grouped by type, but they're also grouped by priority level to give citizens and the planning commission board supervisors some guidance on which projects we really want to implement in the more near term, which for transportation projects is 10 years versus those visionary projects that will take a lot more time to develop. So there's the new priority level as well as the project classification. So this is the major thoroughfare plan map. And again, the projects are grouped. One thing that's a little bit different on the map is we have a lot of projects in the Route 60 corridor east growth area that have been recommended in previous studies completed by VDOT and others. So we have a call out in that particular area. And that's one thing we did too. We included some of the projects that were recommended in the Route 60 study that VDOT just completed and those different studies that have been done. We've had a lot of studies done around 60, so we have a lot of recommendations of projects that could be completed. And again, we have those new pedestrian bicycle projects that are referenced in the plan that are new. And those really focus on the growth areas. This is not a list of all the potential sidewalks and bike lanes we can install. We try to pick those that were realistic in the short term and really kind of extended our existing network. So for example, in the Courthouse Village, all of those segments that are identified for sidewalk improvements branch off of our existing sidewalk sidewalk network. So that's kind of the introduction from Ms. Hurt and I about what the planning commission's recommendation is. Either myself or the planning commission will be happy to answer any questions you all have.
Would the planning commission, any of you all care to make a comment or statement before we go in for more discussion? I have a few questions. I don't know if you guys do. I don't know if this would be more addressed to Andrew, Vicki. Can you guys go into a little bit more detail? Just under some of like the economic opportunity corridor mixed use neighborhood, neighborhood residential is fairly self-explanatory, but like what do you envision in those districts? What kind of development in those? If you want to kind of get a little hone in a little bit more?
Together.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, which growth district are you talking about?
I'm sorry?
Which growth district?
I was talking, I'm sorry, I was looking at this, like economic opportunity, the ones that I'm curious about.
Were you talking about 60 east?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, that's, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah. But it would be all over, just kind of what they envision, you know, in the quarter.
There are only only economic opportunities in two.
You're correct, correct, yeah. But just kind of a cumulative look. So if you guys can go into a little bit of what what you all in the planning commission had envisioned for those.
You have this, the last page of your packet. Look at the very last page. I think this is a quick executive summary.
Got it, yep.
Does that help? 161.
Got it, got it. Okay, so you do have the, I didn't see that. You did have the density in that, okay.
And honestly, you know, since we're discussing here, people have emailed me, made comments about 5,000 high density. Andrew and I calculated today, if you took every place you could put high density housing, we only came up with, what did we come up with, like 500?
We looked at the flat, we looked at the flat rock.
Yeah, we only looked at the Flat Rock area, that's where they were saying, 5,000 in Flat Rock.
Right.
We, I mean, if, and not everything would be approved, but the maximum you could allow in economic opportunity is 30%
Right.
of the land could be housing. We only came up with like 500 when we calculated it today would be the maximum if you maxed it out, which, you know, every plan has to be vetted, analyzed, studied. I mean, we just don't blindly go, yep, check that box, it's 30%. And one thing that we we really feel strongly about is that with anything that's approved for a conditional use permit, the commercial component needs to come first or concurrently with any housing object. I mean, objective or option, I should say, because we don't want a situation where someone says, oh, yes, we're going to do this land, we're going to develop this commercially. And here, we're going to do our little housing thing over here and then the commercial is never done. So it needs to somehow, when it is approved, commercial first or concurrently, I think is critical. Because that's what we're looking for is options for more commercials in a responsible way.
Correct.
Does that answer?
Yes, 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 it does help. Public comment, did you guys get, how was the participation in your?
Like 12, was it?
Yeah, so there was a public comment period at every workshop and meeting where some people commented. And we had kind of two public comment periods. One, we asked for specific comments on the future land use map and chapter eight, which focuses on land use. And I think we had about, I think 12 was about right. And that was included in the planning commission's packet and they went through the comments. And then we've received a few other comments since then. And we've shared, I want to say at least 10 Facebook posts where on the county's website throughout the review process where people could comment and share and that kind of thing.
And I know that Palatine today, there's been some comments that a lot of residents aren't getting that. And I've done some research and Mars has been kind to help. I did not realize there are Dropbox pickup places that residents can get the Palatine today every week if it's not delivered to their homes. And that was one thing I noted on my to-do list, that it's critical that we get that information out, maybe put it on the county website so people know where they can go find public notices. One thing that we didn't mention, and there's big concern about solar farms, and that is on our to-do list, Andrew and I and and the planning commission. You know, that is once the land use is squared away and we can look at solar farm ordinances, subdivision, subdivision, whatever you feel comfortable with. Andrew and staff did a lot of research. I believe that was, did you guys get that information on solar farms?
Yes.
Yes, from localities around how they're handling it, just to see. I think critically, we got to make a decision as as a county. Do you want more solar farms? Are you happy with what we have? I mean, that's, I don't know, we haven't really surveyed residents to really, like I said, there's 30,000 people living here. I don't really know what the vast majority of people feel about that, honestly. But that is on our to-do list.
Okay.
Planning Commission, is there anything I left out, guys?
I have to talk every once in a while.
I know, yes, you do.
To answer your question about economic opportunity at the 60 corridor, that was a heated discussion amongst the planning commission themselves. It pretty much was settled to a certain degree when we found out that our neighboring county Chesterfield has zoned that property commercial and industrial.
That's right, light industrial.
Is what their future plan is for that, that'll be back and up to our property. So we were also looking at a way to.
Excuse me, what which property, Bobby, I'm sorry.
Oh, on Chesterfield.
Next to the Ellis property?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Down that same land.
Economic opportunity right there.
Well, yeah, you have three of them, though, that was.
And this would be a way, I'm sorry, a real way to kind of transfer or move from that commercial into our rural residential area for the county itself and take advantage of the commercial building too by being the 70 and the 30. So that was the reason that it was ultimately decided to have that economic opportunity at that location.
And also, we agreed upon only, if any economic opportunity, max of 30% of the land can be used for any type of housing. So 70% had to be commercial.
And we do know that that's whatever goes there, that we'll have to address the traffic. That's going to be the major issue for anything that location, how they handle that traffic.
And also record, just in our discussions, ideally, that property that that's in Chesterfield that adjoins that, it would be great if that could be developed concurrently with our property and let Chesterfield worry about the ingress and ingress of that property on 60 in Chesterfield. And that lets us not having to be concerned.
Because based on history, how
Yeah.
growth has taken place on 60 already, moving all the way from Boulevard all the way up to where it's at now. It'll be coming to Palatine. So that property at Chesterfield probably will be zoned before and something done there before anything is done in Palatine. So. And hopefully.
And if we're talking about that intersection as well, you notice the issue of nodes and for that visible commercial development, we removed it at Page Row for several reasons. It does not, it's not a signal intersection there. And the other four node areas do have signals. And we just felt like that, you know, that was a problem, that to encourage that very visible commercial development, I guess, when I think of visible commercial development, we kind of thought of like fast food or something. And we were just concerned that the road issue there was not appropriate. You know, without a signal intersection and that intersection is such a problem. And I do have to listen, I'm District One, I have to listen to the residents of Page Row with their concerns there. So that's why we may agree.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Could I ask a couple of questions about this?
Absolutely.
Mr. Pompey, for for clarity, let's use the Ellis track, which is 89 acres. Okay, then he has the two parcels up front, but just use the 89 acres. So we'll call it 90, okay? So when we go to calculate the density that's available for residential, is it nine times 30?
For the comprehensive plan in that language.
What is the maximum amount of density, housing units that can be on that property?
In the way the comprehensive plan is written for economic opportunity, I think it would be nine units times 30% of the 90 acres.
Which is roughly 30 acres.
Yeah.
That's the reason I made it that.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So 270, which is more than they can put in there because of the number of entrances. So this is the exact same number that got turned down. So I mean, we're plant, we're planning for something that we have already.
But that's the max, that's the max.
Absolutely, it's the math, and that's what people turned out for.
I said, that is the maximum allowed.
No, 249 is the max, because they can only have a third entrance.
On what we thought of on economic opportunity, that's not focused just on one track of land. That's the land use for what's been designated throughout the county. It doesn't mean that in a particular project, that 30 acres will definitely be high density housing, because the plan would have to be approved based upon our access standard measurements. And so that would, that's going to be a consideration on anything that you would agree to any type of development. Correct.
Yeah, I think one thing the planning commission to try to focus on is not just the density and the number of units and all of that. They really tried to look at the overall package of a potential project within each of these designations. So for example, like in the village, or sorry, the neighborhood residential, they increased the recommended open space to 30% and really tried to look at that agri-hood concept. So they weren't just looking at the numbers. They want to see an entire package that reflects the design oriented recommendations in the comprehensive plan. If 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 that's a fair assessment.
Jump in, planning commission. Yeah. And you've got to realize that we're talking about less than 5% of the land in Palatine. So we made a big focus that, yes, we want to keep Palatine as rural as possible. So, you know, that was a big focus and a concern. But yet, we did read the 2018 survey and 47% of the people responding to that survey, if you go back and look, commented they wanted alternative choices in housing. And like I said, you know, I I sat back and reflected, and I know other members of the planning commission did as well. There are 30,000 people that live in this county. And I think it's very important to listen to everyone and not just the most vocal handful of people. And, you know, that's what we tried very, you know, very desperately to do. And that's why we tried to be a team, consensus, consensus and listening. And I'm sorry, I'm not standing up. I have a shot in my knee today. It kills me to say.
No worries, no worries.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Could we go at this in a slightly different way? I have a slide called Planning Process Questions for Land Use. Okay? And this really tries to, rather than jump into the middle of all of this and start pointing, as I accused Mr. Melton one time of taking a coloring book approach to land use. This goes to what are the real essential questions, I think, that I would be asking? Why do you have growth districts? The history and purpose, we'll move past that. What are you trying to achieve in each growth? What you're trying to achieve in each growth district is very different. But let's get to housing density, flashpoint. There's no bigger flashpoint in this community than housing density. So tell me about your discussions about trying to decide what is the maximum amount and appropriate.
Mr. Cox, let me just interject if I may.
Yes.
I'm living across the street from 200 apartment units in Palatine County. On how many acres is it, Andrew? 10? 10 to 15 acres. So let me just say, there's constituents in District One, where I live, Founder's Bridge, Bell Crest, Bell Bridge, that have come to me, several hundred people live in that area. And they stated that they were very concerned that why is it when there is a need for mixed use, and I know you read the paper and everything, and that's, that is the trend, people want to live where they have, as Mr. Potter's plan, where you can walk to the grocery store, so forth.
There's no grocery store.
In Mr. Potter's plan.
There's no grocery store there either. There's a whole. Can we go back to the, this is shift to flex. Can we go back to the essential piece that says, okay, how did you decide what is the maximum housing density per acre that's appropriate for Palatine County? Not what's in Bell Crest, not anything else.
Palatine County.
I understand it. How did you decide? That's a small part of Palatine County. You've already heard and you've already seen people starting on Facebook.
Yes.
Okay, and it's, okay.
That's 15.
Okay. The other thing that's reality is there have been four high density projects in Route 60 east. Stave Mill Project was pulled. The other three projects were all defeated. Okay, out, out, out of the 10 supervisors over two boards
Yes, sir.
that have voted, there's only been three, Miss Cavill, Miss Melton, and Mrs. Carmack, who voted for that. That means 70% of the supervisors have said no. So why do you, why do you expect this to go forward?
Mr. Sir, I guess I can answer some of that as well. So one thing that the planning commission looked at, you know, when it says three units an acre, four units an acre, it's hard to visualize what that actually looks like. So what the planning commission did was look at actual projects throughout the region and throughout Virginia. And staff compiled the density, the open space within each development, and they looked at the range of densities. And they looked at which projects they thought reflected the character of Palatine County based on those density numbers. And the densities for neighborhood residential, the comparable land use designation didn't change, but they really focused again on the description. So I think, if I remember correctly, neighborhood residential, they increased the recommended open space from 20 to 30% because some of the projects thought, hey, you know, because some of the projects thought, hey, you know, it might be three unit, three something units an acre, but with the open space and the design of the buildings, we were comfortable with that, so we thought it could blend in. So I think the Planning Commission really looked at those different examples from other communities to see which ones they liked, which ones they didn't like. And not only didn't necessarily adjust the densities, even though there was a lot of discussion about that, they really looked at the different descriptors and characteristics of the development and tried to incorporate that into the recommendations.
So, so, back to how did you choose what's the maximum density in the county? Remember, before we were mandated to have eight and nine units per acre, the maximum density in this county was four units per acre if you had water and sewer. So why didn't you go back to where we were before it was mandated?
Mr. Cox, I answered that question, those apartments beside me, they were approved by the county, and they're 200 units on less than 13 acres.
We're talking about Route 60 East, please?
Yes, I know, you said for the county, you did not specify Route 60 in your question to me, so you asked for the county.
Let's focus on each district a little bit differently. Can we focus on East, East, please?
The one thing about it, though, I think we're getting way into the weeds.
Yes.
I mean, the densities are going to come with the zoning ordinance. That's, this can change, this whole document can morph, change. I think to worry about why exactly we're at nine, I mean, we're going to change the zoning ordinance.
Well, no, 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 we're not, well, first of all, let's talk about the structure, okay? This refers to current zoning districts. When we were going to change it before, here, we didn't confuse ourselves. We didn't say, these are the zoning districts that are applicable for this, okay? So we have, we have confused ourselves tremendously.
I stated in the beginning that those zoning districts, we've been discussed removing them from each land use, because once the land uses are approved-
The point, the point is, why did, why?
We can take them out, let's, let's keep it easy, we'll take it, hang on, no, we'll just take them out.
I make a statement, you know, let, let me just make this one statement, Mr. Cox. As one supervisor, I'm not feeling this particularly helpful with the dialogue going back and forth between supervisors and the Planning Commission and the audience. I'm having a hard time focusing, and I'm trying to understand how we're going to resolve all the questions that we have. And I'll be honest with you, Madam Chair, you know, I think I should with you. I think my goal coming here tonight was to hear the Planning Commission, okay? I talk to my Planning Commission on a regular basis. And like our husband, like her husband, we don't always agree, but that's okay.
That's okay, we're still friends.
But we, we have that conversation, just like I'm sure you guys do. My goal tonight was to come and be a good listener, understand what was being presented, the reasoning, the rationale behind it, and then go to work in some systematic fashion. I know you've been a strong advocate for us going to work like I am and having workshops where we approach our concerns or questions about the comprehensive plan in some orderly fashion. We're not going to get this done tonight the way we're going.
Agreed. This is not productive, agreed.
Could I, could I go back, please? Okay. Could I have my slide back up? This is a process slide, trying to understand how the Planning Commission got to where they are. Density is a big deal. Mixed use is an urban concept, not a rural concept, so that's kind of unusual in terms of how it got here. So I had a lot of questions about the process and how they got to where they are. Now, y'all don't want to talk about that, that's fine, but that was where I started, was looking for process.
Well, Mr. Cox, on mixed use, why are you saying that it's strictly urban? I somewhat disagree with, with that assessment, honestly, because, you know, Powhatan County, we have mixed use in the courthouse, we have mixed use down in 711, and if you go around the state of Virginia, and I don't have that list with me, and look at some rural counties, there are mixed use areas within other rural counties. And I, I'll just say this for me, Mr. Cox, where, where I started out at this point, and my fellow Planning Commission people, the county has a revenue issue. We all know this, 92% residential, aid business. We did a lot of research, how do we get commercial here? How do we get people interested in responsible commercial in Powhatan County? And if you go back and look at what the market is around us out there, the big move is mixed use. Localities are taking their strip centers and turning them into mixed use all around us. So that was our thought process, and my thought process is, what is happening out there? What, what is the demand for? And demand changes from time to time. It's going to be very hard to predict, uh, predict land use or commercial development because of COVID. We have an overabundance of vacant office space. So we were just trying to come up with responsible land use that can meet the needs of the county for revenue and provide, as I stated in my opening remarks, what your strategic plan asks for.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm seeing, as a county, we're having a problem with the economic development, land zone, and where they are. That's the basic problem. I don't see a problem with most of the rest of it. So that's probably what y'all are going to have to figure out what you're going to do with this spot. Otherwise, all the other designations seem fine, even what the people that talk to you, and the one like Flat Rock, and then the stuff up here is where I'm getting the most time, so.
And as I said, we just make a suggestion. You guys are certainly welcome, obviously, it's your responsibility to make any necessary changes that you would like, or suggestions or directives and to research you would like us to do.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Carmack, this is a, this is a, I got another slide, and I want to make sure, we'll get away from growth districts for a second. I want to make sure I understand, I need Mr. Pompey, I want to go through this and see if I understand it correctly. Could you put up my residential development and rural areas? This has to do with everything outside, all the green, okay? I want to see if I got this right. All right, so this is residential development and rural areas. A-10 conservation subdivisions, that's the horse, right? That's what we're going to do, okay? Which is by right, staff managed, no cash proffers, does, design requirements are poor in the A-10. We fixed them in the R-5 Conservation Districts.
I don't know if I necessarily agree with the design requirements are poor. And honestly, we've never had a conservation subdivision actually constructed to date, but-
Could we, could we go to, RR is restricted, which is also part of the rural areas. That's restricted to north of 711, are you planning to change that?
That area is designated rural areas in the-
So that would, that would stay the same, okay? So RR5 is not available.
That's correct, there's not a land use designation that recommends one unit per five acres.
And RR5 Conservation Subdivision is not available.
That's correct.
Private Road Subdivision is not available. You, you said that in your, the principal by right is A-10. I'm just, I'm not, I'm just trying to get, get-
I don't know if it, the comprehensive plan really addresses private road subdivisions, it does recommend-
No, but what you said was, what you said was, this was what we were going to use, was the, the A-10. Okay, so I just, so maybe private roads in there, maybe it's not. Current subdivisions, no expansions, really platted lots only, right?
Yeah, would not, it would not recommend expansion.
So, for 90% of the county, residential development will occur outside the growth areas with the exception of RR, and will have no governing body review.
At, recommended densities of one unit per 10 acres, I think-
I mean, that's what that says, I just want to make, did I get that pretty much right?
It recommends basically following the A-10 zoning standards, one unit per 10 acres.
Right, okay, but most of that, almost all of that will be by right.
Correct, it would, it would not recommend rezoning outside the growth areas.
All I want to know, I got it straight, thank you.
Okay. Um, do you all have any other questions or comments of the Planning Commission? Or tonight?
Madam Chair, I've got questions, but I think we're going to be butt assertive. I hold those questions as we go through your workshops in some orderly fashion of your choosing, where we have an opportunity to go behind and reflect on what's-
Correct, this is strictly a presentation from the Planning Commission.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Yes.
Um, thank you. Thank you to the Planning Commission. That's where I'm going to come from. I got a front row seat with Mr. Cox sitting real close, and I appreciate his, his perspective immensely. But I clearly remember sitting in the joint meeting in October. Just go put this together, come back to us. Let's get it done real quick. You guys put a lot of months into it, a lot of time. You opened it up, you had public meetings. How you arrived at your decisions, probably from my perspective, are not so significant because we can change your decision. We, we get to vote up here, almost like I went to this meeting Monday night. We're the elected people. You guys are, are appointed, and I think you all put forth a strong effort. I was interested in how you got to some of the process, and I came to the meetings that you guys had and watched you and listened to you, and you debated, and there were some heated debates. But the one thing I'll say is, I think that you looked at the future land use map for the whole county, not for a parcel, and I appreciate it, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I would like to thank the Planning Commission as well, serving on the Planning Commission myself. I understand how much work this is and how much time it is and how frustrating it can be, so, thank you. We truly appreciate your efforts.
Madam Chair, in my comments, I meant to thank the Planning Commission as well. Having served on the Planning Commission, I know it's important, it's in its value. And I hope the Chairman of the Planning Commission will consider paying off on our most recent debt.
I know, I owe you a debt.
But we'll, we'll keep that for later time. Thank you.
I should have brought it with me tonight, sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Pompey.
So I guess in terms of next steps, it sounds like I'll be coordinating with you and Ms. Hertz on future workshops and what topics you all would like to discuss.
Correct, absolutely, that would be, and sooner rather than later, I want to proceed with this fairly expeditiously. Okay, that being said, we will have our second public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state their, your name and address for the record.
Stephen Barron, 3492, Richards Run. Oh, I want to thank Mr. Cox for digging into the weeds, so to speak. Oh, I do have a question, I know y'all can't answer, maybe we need to change it. But will the Planning Commission be available for all this discussion when y'all get into all the weeds, so to speak? For the public to see, not behind closed doors. Second of all, I heard a statement made, oh, it's not 5,000. Yes, it is 5,000. It's only 500 at the Flat Rock area. So let's be real listening, let's be honest about all this stuff. Yes, up there, east of 288, in the Village, we have these areas for high-density development. Mr. Cox made a comment, he's right. People don't want it. Now, I heard a statement made, well, we want to look to what everybody says. I agree, we should, nobody should be stifled from saying what they think. But people vote the way they think. And the last time we had this issue come up any amount at all was February 26, 2018. And what happened to, after that issue, along with some other things? We've got a whole lot of new faces setting up there. So think long and hard. I know y'all are going to look at all this and dig into it. But I'm sorry, I'm the only idiot to come up here and voice my opinion about it. I haven't had a chance to be here, thank God, my situation's improved, and I can start making these meetings more often and see what's going on. I think y'all have done a good job so far. Please don't blow it in the next part, I know y'all won't, I pray to God you won't. But this stuff of people want high-density housing in this county? I'm sorry, majority of people don't, yes, there are some. The majority of people do not want it. Now, you ask me, why am I so adamant about it? I'll tell you why. I've lived near some high-density housing. And you can build the nicest apartments you want, nicest condominiums you want. Give it 10 or 15 years and see what happens to it. It ain't what you want to live next door to. I can tell you that much, so please. Like I said, yeah, it ain't but 15 comments on Facebook I heard. Let me tell you one thing, there's a whole lot of people talking about it. You know, I'm in business, all people come in my facility. And that's the first thing they ask me, because they know I'm dumb enough to get up here and voice my opinion and speak my mind. But I tell you, there's a whole lot of people very concerned about what's going on right now about this. Y'all don't know. It's a wave starting to rise up about this again. And I hope we don't have to go down that path again, because, you know, I admit, I, you know, I thought it was great. I think you get up, speak your mind, force your opinion, we all shake hands and walk away after the night's over with. But please, thank, I know y'all are going to change things, and I will wind it up, I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone on Zoom? Alrighty, we'll close the public comment period. County Attorney comments?
No comments.
County Administrator comments?
No comments.
Board comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Talked to you today, I would like on a future workshop for consideration, going back and revisiting our zoning ordinance as it pertains to inoperable vehicles and shielding them from the public. So right now, I have a situation from a public road, you can see seven or eight vehicles, they're undercover, but people aren't particularly enamored, seeing vehicles undercover from the road. So I would like to go back and revisit our ordinance as it pertains to that, Madam Chair.
Sounds good.
Second thing, going back to the comprehensive plan just briefly. One of the things that will be guiding me is this. It's called our Powhatan County Strategic Plan. If you attended our workshops where we developed this, our facilitator, Mr. Ken Peterson, who is from Goochlin, incidentally, he didn't do it in his capacity as a supervisor, but as an OSI consultant. He said the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors, they actually review this every time they have a rezoning, anytime they do anything with business affecting the county, they go back and look at the strategic, strategic plan. So we developed this for a reason, I'm going to be using it when we go through our review, Madam Chair, with your leadership, and that's going to be guiding me, so thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, Mr. Cox?
Madam Chair. It's obvious that Ms. Hertz and I probably will come to some different conclusions. But when we started down this path, one of the things I, I told Mrs. Carmack, as, as did other supervisors, that we very much wanted this meeting. Actually, I would like to have had a more expanded meeting with more people talking. Having been on the Planning Commission and simply had your piece of paper delivered by someone else, no chance to talk about it, no chance to debate it, no chance to get involved, that was a very empty feeling, it was just suddenly going into the night. So, Ms. Hertz, while I may not necessarily agree with you, I really appreciate your time and effort and the rest of the Planning Commission, and I'm glad we had a chance to talk tonight, thank you.
Mr. Pyle, any comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay, that being said, we need to move to our closed session.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County desires to discuss and close meeting the following matters. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose, or the disposition of publicly-held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of public body concerning convenience center. Consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation, open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating strategy of public body concerning the RC zoning litigation. And whereas pursuant to sections 2.2, 37, 11, A3, and A7 of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may incur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County does hereby authorize discussion of four-state management in closed meeting, need that as a motion.
So moved?
Certainly.
Questions or comments on motion? Do we do a roll, or just all in favor, right? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Are you looking for me for the exit?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't usually do it, but give me a second, I'll pull it up.
I don't have it. Sorry.
I think I can do it by memory, you ready?
Yep.
Were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and were only such matters discussed in the closed meeting as were disclosed in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, need a roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
I'm.
Mr. Barley.
Aye.
Ms. Carmack.
Aye. I think that's it, meeting adjourned.